I've started the stream, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Northampton Town Council Executive Meeting. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Firstly, I'd like to introduce you to the officers that are supporting us. We have Richard Baldwin, who is the Acting Town Council. Lesley Chamberlain Smith, who is from NCAL, helping us through this process. Laurie Gould, who is our Monitoring Officer, I guess, Legal Advisor. And we have Marion Goodman, who is presently Director of Customer and Communities Services at the Borough Council. Many of the services that we're going to be thinking about and talking about tonight are under Marion's directorship. So she's here to perhaps help us with answering questions if necessary. We also have Chair of the Town Council, councillor Rufia Ashraf, and councillor Mike Hallam, who is the leader of the Tory Conservative Group. So, welcome, everybody. There's a member of the, sorry, I say your pardon, councillor Stone is a town council member. The rest of the councillors are part of the committee, the executive committee. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm going to hand over to the Acting Town Clerk, Richard, to take us through the papers tonight. We have two major items. One is the transfer of property and services, and the other is looking at the budget. So if we could start off with the...
Excuse me, Chair. We will need to deal with apologies in the minutes of last meeting.
I'm just going on to the...
I beg your pardon.
Yeah, so that was my introduction. Right, on to apologies for absence, Maisie.
We have received no apologies for absence, Chair.
Thank you very much. On to the minutes, to approve the minutes of the meeting of the committee held on 5th of January. Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Great, Chair.
Can we agree the minutes?
Yeah, great.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. Do we have any declarations of interest? No, thank you very much. Right, so on to the main items. One is the transfer of property and services. And I'd like to hand over to the Acting Town Clerk, Richard, who will take us through the first part of this meeting. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the report starting on page five of your agenda papers. I think as members are fully aware, this item and the next one relating to the budget are very much interconnected. And the key component of the draft budget is services which may or may not be transferred to the town council. And you could have decided the order in the opposite order for these items. But I suggest it's perhaps best to look initially at the various services which you may wish to have transferred, and others may wish to transfer to you, first of all. And that will then help you in looking in detail or more detail. If I could start off, as I say, on page five, and mention that you have, of course, looked at a number of issues over your meetings, and indeed the informal meeting of the town council immediately prior to your meeting in December, looking at various categories of services. The first I have under item A are those transfers which are already agreed. These are confirmed in law in the statutory order which created the town council. That went on to say that allotments will transfer to you on the 1st of April. And I've listed the eight allotment sites which are included in the order. Next, the order says the mayoralty will transfer and regalia to be agreed. But all the regalia, muniements, et cetera, will also be transferred to you, although their actual final composition has yet to be reported to you. And then by dint of the powers and duties of parish councils, the Borough Council's existing responsibility to maintain closed church yards on behalf of the Church of England will transfer, or does transfer, to the town council on the 1st of April also. So you have those three items, will be your responsibility, whatever. And provision for those will need to be included within the budget and will come to that. Perhaps then the next main item that members may want to discuss would be item B. Those matters which the Borough Council agreed in principle at their meeting on the 2nd of November, they were willing to transfer to the town council, subject to further reports through the cross-party working group and through them to the full Borough Council. And you can see the list at the very bottom of the page, I won't read it out. But it does include the significant services of market, events and entertainments, festive lighting, street furniture, hanging baskets, the community grant and town centre management. The Working Party and then indeed the Borough Council last night further agreed to the potential transfer to you of the historic part of the Guildhall on a long lease, a full repairing lease. And I've listed in the report what I assume would be the principal responsibilities of West Northamptonshire as the landlord. They would continue to be responsible for structural repairs, including the roof, external statues, et cetera, whilst the town council would be responsible for the internal repairs. Because the Guildhall, as you all know, is one integral unit with the modern office extension, it isn't readily easily divided into two separate units. So the proposal is that there would be a service charge. The Principal Council, West Northants, would retain the ownership of the freehold and would continue to manage the whole building, but would render a service charge upon the town council for a proportion based on area. It's proportionate proportion of the service charge, covering the matters I've set out in the report again, such as cleaning, lighting, a very major one is business rates, insurance, et cetera. When we come to the report, Chair, of the budget, there is a figure given for an estimate of that. And perhaps I should mention now, when I pour some moment to members to comment on these matters at this point, to say that the £180,000 shown as a contingency figure for a service charge is difficult to define. The Borough Council officers have provided that figure. However, we don't know the exact area that the town council will be managing. The relationship between the landlord and the tenant in relation to shared areas, shared services, common areas where we would have access rights, et cetera. We don't know exactly the size areas the town council would occupy. All those matters have to be negotiated and agreed, of course, by West Northants. But in order to make the move forward and to provide a reasonable estimate of potential expenditure, we have arrived, or Borough Council officers have advising you, that a reasonable contingency figure is the £180,000. That is a net figure, and I understand takes account of current income as well as the expenditure cost of running it. I don't think I want to say any more in my way of introduction. I'll come on to the other services, but you will see from the report, subject to your comments and discussion, that the recommendation is that in principle, and subject to the concurrence of West Northants, you agree to accept the transfer of those properties and services, including the long lease of the Guildhall, subject to approval of the budget, of course, and to further reports on financial and staffing implications at a later date of this meeting. But because the town council has a deadline for setting its precept of the 27th, and I'll refer to this again at the next item, 27th of this month, you do need to start making some in-principle decisions in order to progress a budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I will doubtless lean on colleagues from the Borough Council to assist in answering them.
We have two questions. One from councillor Jamie Lane, followed by councillor Mike Hallam, and then Brian Markham. If you could keep your questions and your comments fairly succinct and clear, and then we will be able to get through this quite long agenda in time. So councillor Lane, would you like to...
Just a query on the transfers of the mayoral regalia and the other items in the Guildhall. Because I know in the past, some mayors have said they'd not like the artwork that's hanging in the mayor's parlour. I know there's leave offices, things like that, where they changed the artwork with the museum. I'm just wondering, is it like stock now? So what we've got in the Guildhall, we keep, and it comes into the town council? Or does that revert back to the museum's artwork and still borrow it? Beary around the artwork there? And also, how is this protected? I'd like to see this in some sort of trust, because as we go forward, we know the costs only ever go up. And 10 years down the line, I don't want to see things in the Guildhall that are sold to a freezer keeper. I want it to be protected. That's my question.
I could answer, Chair, if I may, the first part quite easily. Whilst the full list, as I mentioned, hadn't been compiled, councillor, the draft list, an initial list, has already been submitted to the Borough Council, which includes those current paintings, which it is believed are the proprietary of the, if you like, the mayoral service. There are, as you say, some paintings that are not included in the transfer, but the full list. So it's a mix, is the answer. But those that are in the, liquidly in the ownership of the town council have already been identified. There are some other civic regalia, like the mace and chains of office, and potentially the smaller maces, which have yet to be included in the substantive list. But we will know at the end of this process, before April, a full list for you to agree and to see that which is in the total ownership. That doesn't, of course, stop you continuing the arrangement with the museum to have future paintings. If mayors or the council decide to change the painting, that's something that would be in the town council's determination. The more difficult point you mentioned was the issue of establishing a trust. I haven't heard of a trust being established to own artefacts. There are, it is, I won't say common, but it's often been established that to protect certain facilities, maybe parks, a setup of Milton Keynes Council, all their parks are held by a parks trust to save them from future development. And in terms of setting up a trust to protect the artefacts or the muniements, we would have to investigate that. I am assuming that the town council would want to give a firm undertaking, that it would... It wouldn't wish to accept something that it wasn't wishing to retain as a public property. In terms of accepting the property, perhaps we could leave it subject to investigating the potential of a trust owning some or all of the muniements.
Yeah, I think councillor Lane was worried about mayoralty, really.
Oh, no, if I can speak, the smaller maces are older than the large mace. They're actually more important to them. And we have been rumored in the past, one, for example, the number plate being sold and things like that. And we want to make sure they are protected. And I understood that we could have a museum trust anywhere a few years ago. So we worked in that thing to trust, stop them being sold, because we're in down this road with Secemper. And had that been protected, we couldn't have sold it.
Well, I don't have the answer on trust. I think we would just have to say, councillor, that if you would accept the principle of accepting the muniements and investigate the trust, I would have to take some further advice on that.
Can I possibly help here, councillor Lane? As Richard said earlier, the statutory orders have vested the mayoralty and everything that goes with the mayoralty in the town council. That is a statutory order that has the force of law. Along with that, there's a whole series of, how can I put it, guidance and so on. But once that has happened, you don't really need a trustee ship. You could have one if you wanted to, but you don't actually need it, because the town council, and certainly not the Unitary Authority, would have no right whatsoever to sell any of that regalia, including the maces, without, I think, actually approaching in the Secretary of State. And I think that any permission would be, wouldn't be forthcoming at all. I think it's as safe as a trust. Because in my experience, even trusts are no absolute safe against selling valuable articles that belong to a local authority. So I think you can rest assured that the transfer by statutory order to the town council will be a pretty good safeguard for the future.
Happy with that, councillor Lane? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Hallam, if you'd like to...
I'll try and keep it brief so we can move things along. Am I right to assume that the income for the building in this past year, the income will come out as zero because of the COVID situation? What was the income for the building in the last, if you like, normal year? So let's take that as 2019, 20, so we'd have got most of that in. And what would be the projection for the income in next year, with, let's say, with everything getting back to normal? And do we then take that figure off the top? So we get the income then off, I think it was £180,000, you said, Richard? What are we projecting to take in off of that, bearing in mind all the various permutations at the moment?
Thank you, Chair. The figure I've mentioned, £180,000, is a net figure. I don't have the detailed income, I'm afraid, for this year. I haven't been advised of it. But I have been advised by the accountants that this is their estimate of the likely net figure for this year. This is taking into account income as well as expenditure.
So how does the income work then, Richard? I'm a bit confused then. I thought if we make the income, we get that money, and that money comes off of that £180,000.
I haven't, I've been advised that this is the figure, is a net figure, councillor. However, I would say that this, as the report says, it's subject to a further financial report, because I understand that the council would want to see a full income and expenditure for the Guildhall, because we haven't determined exactly which areas the Guildhall, the town council, will accept responsibility for. That still has to be negotiated. So I'm hoping that you would feel comfortable to be able to agree the in-principle decision, enable the officers to then negotiate the detail of actually what is entailed, then present to you a full income and expenditure account for whatever that area is.
Thanks. Can I just follow up, Chair, if that's okay? I don't think I am comfortable with that, because that's agreeing to do something, agreeing to buy a product before you know the cost of the product. And for me, it's the potential, in normal circumstances, and I'm not judging this on COVID, because that's very, very difficult to judge. But in normal circumstances, what is the potential to market those rooms more? And I know that facilities have done a good job, and some of the photos have had done, make it look absolutely fantastic. How much more revenue can we squeeze out of it to bring that number down? So I'm not particularly comfortable agreeing to do it when we don't know the figures or the potential of the maximum kind of low-level income that we could get in a bad year and high level living. Obviously, we're taking on the risk that COVID carries on for 12 months and we don't get any income. So what's our potential in normal circumstances? I'd really want to know that to make me more comfortable.
Thank you. The only comment I can make is clearly, there would have to be, there is a potential for the town council to market the building further, whether that's to achieve income or to increase community access to the building. There are both sides to that, and I'm sure that's something you'd want to go into in detail. The issue I'm having to advise you on at the moment is you need to set a precept at the moment. And that has to come before you finalize the precise terms of any long lease. I understand that you would wish it to be the other way around. But as time stands, I can't give you an undertaking where I could get that information for you.
Chair, can I ask one more, if that's okay? But just to round this topic off. If we weren't to take it on, what are the risks that West Northants dispose of the building? Is that a very high risk or very low risk? Or is it very unlikely, because it's a grade two listed building, and very few other people could do anything with it? So is it therefore, does the state of the building make it very unlikely to be transferred to another use? Or is it likely that suddenly it becomes the Guildhall Hotel?
I, of course, can't speculate about West Northants. I know nothing of West Northants. But the only point I would make about the Guildhall is that the council has already accepted legal responsibility for all the artefacts in the Guildhall. And I would imagine it's inconceivable to have all of the list of artefacts, including the mayoral chair, and not have the Guildhall to put it in.
I guess from my point of view, it's how likely is it that that building could be used for something else? And my view, my personal view, is actually very unlikely, given the cost of the implications of the roof and all of the different things. I don't think it's that likely that it could be used for much else. People may have a different view. I'd be interested to hear it.
Yeah. Perhaps I can add to this, Chair, if I could. The indications that I, because I've been attending the early negotiations with the Unitary, with the Shadow Unitary Authority on the issue of a long lease. They were, as my understanding, they were visiting the Guildhall today, because we told them that we would want access, of course, and occupation of the old Guildhall. So it's early days yet. But certainly, the assurances I received, they have no intention of selling or whatever. But of course, one can never tell what happens in the future. But the likelihood of that happening for a grade two listed building, particularly as notable as the Guildhall, is being sold on or converted into a public house or anything, I think is extremely unlikely. Obviously, one can't say with 100% certainty.
But you've got the possibility, sorry, Laurie, you've got the possibility at that point, if it does go spectacularly wrong like that in the future, you would have the possibility to try and step in at that point and then take it on. Obviously, the terms of a deal might be different at that point, but it's still not off the table for the town council in the future.
Yeah. And don't forget that a long lease gives you considerable security in your tenure of the Guildhall. Considerable. Like, not quite, but akin to a business lease. They would have you there as a tenant and almost impossible to remove.
Right, thank you. I was wondering if we could get some figures, because I think that's something that would give us a little bit more of a basis to feel secure on this.
Income figures, Chair.
Yes, income figures. And it shouldn't be too difficult to do that.
Well, as you say, we could certainly, with Laurie's assistance, seek those figures and present them with your report at the same time to the full council meeting on the 27th.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. On to councillor Markham, Brian Markham.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I would say I recall at the last executive meeting, or maybe the town council, asking if we could have income figures today. If we, but to go back to the dry subject, but very important one, on the terms of the lease and so on. If it's, if the net figure is, well, first of all, we're told that we would only lease part of the building, and they would, the Unitary would provide the services, presumably, that cleaning was mentioned and so on, for that building, and therefore, security and so on. But then we would be paying a net figure of £180,000. If that, if they're saying, well, that's what we would be, what we would be paying is £180,000 plus whatever they deem to be the income of the building. And if we're making, if we're in that thing, oh, are they definitely, are they going to take any income? I mean, I very much support the idea that we would like to promote the building and manage the building. But I just wondered, should we be putting an additional amount on that £180,000 in case for the next six months, we can't get any income because of COVID? That's one question. And the other one is, should we be considering putting in our draft budget a facilities manager or somebody to promote and let the building? The Borough Council Facilities Manager is the licensee for the building. If there's a wedding reception, the drinks served and so on, graduation balls and so on. Then should we be adjusting our budget to promote, one, to, in case we don't get the income, and two, to promote the use of Guildhall, which I would very much like to promote, you know, over the years, and would be a good income stream for the town council and also a good figure in front?
Yes, yes, I understand, Brian. Perhaps, Richard, you could clarify the fact that £100,000 in that figure are the business rates and that the £80,000 left is the service, the cleaning, the security, the insurance, the general sort of management of the building for, on behalf of the town council. The interior, yeah, thank you.
I believe those figures are correct. But as we've said, we're going to provide, if you've suggested, we seek to provide a full breakdown at the council meeting. And I would perhaps wait to see, I'd give you an accurate answer to that question. The council meeting. But answering councillor Markham, the direct point, these figures would include the staffing costs of providing those services. And as I mentioned, it includes a net figure, including income. So answering you, no, it wouldn't go higher and it wouldn't go any lower if you increased the income. This is an estimate as a baseline figure, a useful figure for you to be able to determine once the negotiations have been completed.
So the question, surely then, shouldn't we be asking for them to change? So what you're suggesting, the staffing costs, what we pay, our lease of the building, would not allow us to market, promote and take the income from the building?
I was suggesting the opposite, councillor. I was saying it does.
Yes, it does.
It does, it does. But if we're not paying for that person who's staffing the building?
Well, I was just saying, you're paying a proportion of the total staffing costs. That's what a service charge would be. How that is divided is yet to be determined, but this would enable you to do it. Your answer generally, the answer to the specific point about any major loss of income at any time, is of course, comes on to the budget matter, Chair, that we are then looking for the necessity to have good reserves in hand to meet those sorts of eventualities. And if I may, on answering your question relating to the budget that's coming, our advice to you, and our, is the NCAL, the National, the Northants Local Councils Association advice, is that you should seek to establish a capital reserve of six months gross expenditure, because of all those things that may, unpredictable things that could happen. So answering councillor Markham, yes, if there was a dramatic reduction in income in any service, you would have to have some reserves or contingency reserves to meet it. And the budget proposal is recommending that you start a contingency fund for that very purpose.
I think, right, Brian, very quickly, if you have another question, or you've muted yourself. Brian, you're muted. We can't hear you. Is this a follow-on or is it a new question?
It's a new question, a different subject. Regarding the allotments, which we're taking on, and presumably, King's Hope and, I'm not sure, the Park Copman of Delapri would also take on any allotments in their area. And some existing parishes have their allotments. But at the moment, there is an allotment officer through IB3D who supplies that service. Are we considering joining up with the two new, the community council and perhaps the parish council so that jointly, whatever, there's a cost in taking on those allotments, there's income as well, but there's a cost, you know, of managing them together, working in partnership, because the other two are taking them on as well?
Yes, is the straightforward answer. Yes, there is that potential to be looked at, and we, officers, have discussed it only today.
Thank you. I think it's a lot of detail that would be discussed later. We're looking very much at the broad principles tonight. And, you know, whether we feel that the Guildhall is better in the town council's hands under a long lease. I think the, the internal repairing basis is, is very sound. And I think the landlord having responsibility for the exterior and all the statutory is, the roof is also something that looks favourably upon the, the town council and the futures of responsibilities and liabilities that we might have. Is there anything you want more, you want to say, Laurie or Richard about the Guildhall?
No, I, I think the negotiations need to proceed. I am confident they will come to a very good conclusion. I certainly have that assurance also from our chief exec, who's talking to his opposite number at the Unitary Authority. So I, we will come back with a report. I would hope all of this to be settled, the lease, by the 31st of March. That's certainly my, my wish and the message I've been getting over to the officers on the opposite side. And so we can come back early enough to give you that report. That the town council occupies the Guildhall. Otherwise, to my mind, the whole thing just doesn't work.
Absolutely. And, right, do you want to go on to the next part of the property services?
Yes, that's, thank you, Chair. Whilst the, the other properties and services I've mentioned have been agreed by the Borough Council or in principle by the Borough Council, there is a further list, and this is over the page now on the page six, item C of my report, that relates to those properties on which you have asked for more information, but on which the Borough Council has made no decision at all. And the, the list again is indicated there. Local, and these have all been mentioned by committee and town council members in recent meetings. And we've sought information on them. Providing the information is even more challenging in this range of services than it was for the Guildhall, because a number of them, as you will well be aware, are part of integrated services, in some cases, subject to contractors, and desegregating those services and providing detailed income and information, income and expenditure for those, it is not possible for you to be able to take an informed decision. We are therefore, when it comes to possible way forward, suggesting a slightly different approach here. The default position apparently is that all these services will transfer to West Northants on the first of April, and the current draft budget, as I understand it, of the new Unitary Council includes all these services. So the recommendation which the officers, and I've discussed with colleagues at the Borough Council on this as well, is that we would explore with West Northants the potential of transferring these services as a funded service, certainly in the first year, that West Northants would meet the full cost that's in their budget, and then come to an agreement with the town council for a graded reduction in that funding over a period of years to be discussed, so that perhaps in year two, it'll be ninety percent of the cost of those services. I don't have the figures entirely, but if you were to agree this as an in principle, as the report says, to explore with West Northants, we can report back with the intention that it has a nil impact upon your budget in year one.
And we have a question from Les Marriott, councillor Marriott.
I think we probably, given the last item, I think we probably should adapt with the budget first, to be honest with you, but on this one, Richard, I'm fully supportive of the approach on that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we've got to make sure we understand what the facts and figures are before we take them on board. And I'm pleased to see Marion here, because not only she's the director at the moment, but she is the future, hopefully, full-time town clerk for us, but so that, that is something that I think is vitally important. One thing, and I must, I must admit, I did lose the plot on the last part of it, because I thought we ought to deal with the finances part of it first, but one thing you mentioned in the previous part of the report is about the closed church hours. And I think it's important, you know, you mentioned that it hasn't been given, I just wondered if by the end of this month, you'll have some idea of that. Because if that is a statutory service to have to provide, that should be automatically in the budget if we're going to have to pay it to that, Richard. So I just wonder as and when we're going to get that detail to make sure that we can actually make a proper judgement on that, because it is a statutory thing that we should be taking on as well as allotments, so.
Yeah.
Just on those points really, but I do, sort of, on the second part of the report, I do sort of appreciate what you're saying, and I think we don't want to set ourselves up to failure, that would be the wrong thing to do, you know, want to make sure that whenever we move forward on the town council, we actually do the best for the residents in the town centre and get the right services on board at the right price.
Thank you, Chair. With regard to the, the costs, yes, I've spoken to Mr Hackett, to Peter Hackett about the, the area. It simply needs someone to go and survey it, because it's in the gross contract, as you know, to work out a proportion of cost will be recharged to the town council. I don't have that figure at the moment, but I'm anticipating it's sufficiently a small figure that the current services contingency in the draft budget we're going to talk about in a minute will be more than enough to cover that, and I do mention that in the budget report.
Can I suggest, Richard, that the items that you've just mentioned, the open spaces and play areas, community centres, war memorials, neighbourhood wardens and park rangers, these are not actually in the budget that we're going to be looking at shortly. They are extras and they are presently sitting in the West Northants budget. And I suggest that we look at that at a later stage. We have to agree the budget items that you proposed for us later. And that these items would be an additional service that we could provide or offer. And they, you know, we could look at those at a later stage, because hopefully they would come with funding from the unitary. But I think they're not for us to make a decision on tonight.
Well, it's certainly your decision, Chair, but I wasn't asking you to make any financial decision. In fact, as I suggested, the proposal, if you were to agree to it, it would have, would not impact upon the budget. However, you're merely asking for authority to discuss, but not asking for any more, but in order to obtain the figures for you to give further consideration, I hope you may agree that, and it will probably be Marion in time, subject to her appointment, that you give authority to those negotiations to start.
Is everybody happy if the, if the negotiations go forward, that we come back with further figures on these items? And that we can consider them at a later date? They don't impact on the budgets that have been put forward for us tonight? Right, thank you very much.
Chair, I, I do.
Yes, yes, councillor Markham.
I have raised my hand. I do think it is important that we set, agree that principle tonight. Yes, we're, we're, in principle, we're willing to discuss all those things with West Northants. But we also set it down quite clearly tonight. And the new council after the elections might change your mind, but I think it is important to stress, we are willing to talk about it, but only if they are willing to, to talk about transferring the, the funds at the same time. We're not willing to talk, we're not willing to talk about it, you know, we say, oh, we'd like to take that on. We would be quite clear, we're only willing to talk about it if they are willing to talk about transferring the current. But maybe phased, but we, that's a problem.
I, I think that's very clear, and I think Richard has that message. And we will instruct, instruct you to, to do just that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Chair, may I mention before you finish that item, I did, certainly, I don't know if all members received it, but I did email the members discussing with colleagues during the day, the practicalities of the decisions that you've, the recommendations you've just decided to make. And that relates to whether we would have everything concluded by the first of April. I know Laurie is confident everything will be agreed for the Guildhall. It may not be, for example, it may not be possible to conclude everything by then. So I was wondering whether, as a contingency stage, you, you might agree to the following words, that in the event of Borough and West Northants councils agreeing to the transfer of property and services outlined, but it not proving possible to conclude the formalities of those transfers by twenty first, by first April, twenty one, town clerk be authorised to conclude a service level agreement with West Northants to enable those services to be continued to delivered under existing arrangements until such time in twenty twenty one, when the formalities of transfer can be completed. In other words, you would have a service level agreement so that there won't be a big bang on the first of April, the people managing and delivering services would continue, and there would be an orderly transfer if we haven't managed to cross every item of, of a lease or a transfer on the first of, by the thirty first of March.
I, I think that's a very wise position.
I think this has been adopted, Chair, in a number, we've looked at other town councils that have been established, and I have direct experience of this happening with another large town council where it worked to all parties advantage in giving an opportunity of months to sort out some complicated legal arrangements.
Right, thank you. Jamie Lane, councillor Lane, you have a question, comment?
Email today.
Yes, councillor Lane. I, I appreciate there seems to be some difficulty in northampton.gov accounts, but hence me reading it out to you.
I thought escape, but it looks like I've been affected now as well. Thank you.
I, I think that secures our position if there is unforeseen circumstances that might hold up any kind of legal transfers. Yes, is everybody happy with that? Yes. Okay, thank you. Right, would you like to go forward on to the next part?
Excuse me, excuse me, Chair. I, I know you've sort of agreed, but we now have, with that wording I've just said, that members appear to be happy with, we come to three formal recommendations. I just wonder, for the point of clarity, it may be better to take a vote on the three recommendations, to see that we are clear, please.
Would you like to read the recommendations out so that we know exactly what we are?
Yes, indeed. These are the recommendations in bold at the top of page five of your agenda. That's to agree in principle with West Northants for the, the transfer of the properties that the Borough Council has already indicated it's willing to transfer, including the long lease, subject to further reports on financial and staffing implications. And secondly, to explore with West Northants funded transfer of those other services we just talked about, the neighbourhood wardens, et cetera, community services. And then thirdly, that anything that isn't concluded by first of April, but agreed in principle, be subject to a service level agreement during such part of twenty one as is necessary until the agreements are sorted.
Thank you, thank you. Is everybody clear on that?
Yeah.
Right, can we agree all three together, please? Is there any problem with anyone? I've got everybody's agreed.
Agreed.
Right, I think that's everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, I think we move on to the draft budget. Part two of this, and the purpose of Richard's report is to invite the committee to recommend a budget and precept to the council, to the council meeting on the twenty seventh of January. And this is to enable the newly elected town council in May to proceed with running the council. So we need to make sure that there are sufficient funds within that budget for them to do the work that they are intending to do on elected, an election. So, Richard, would you like to take us through this, please?
Thank you, Chair. This is the report that starts on page nine of the agenda. And it starts halfway down the page with, as you just said, the explanation as to why we would have to consider for this year a contingency budget. It isn't possible, because there are so many questions, as the discussion and the questions raised by councillors on the last item clearly indicated, we are unable to provide the degree of information and advice to councillors, as you would normally expect on a line-by-line basis of services. So the proposal here is that you have, as you just said, Chair, a contingency budget that covers the foreseeable potential, potential cost to the town council, so that full consideration can be given to those matters in the coming year. But coupled with a clear indication, an instruction to your new town clerk, that as part of this process, you would expect during the course of twenty twenty one, twenty two, that the town council will review every single service included within the budget on a normal full income and expenditure basis to consider whether you wish to make any modifications or enhancements to the service, or add other services indeed. This is a, and using the word, I'm sorry to keep repeating it, a contingency which will enable the council to do that. I've then gone on to say, and I know I've mentioned this to the members before, so I apologise, I'm repeating myself at the bottom of page nine, reminding you that there are a number of elements that you would have in setting a base budget. First, there were administrative costs, including staff costs. Then the operational costs of transferred services, and we have heard about the difficulties there. And then another element of having some provision for new or enhanced services, something extra the town councillors, the new councillors, you rightly say, may wish to include. And then the fourth element is a contingency reserve. On day one, on the first of April, you will have nothing. Pounds nil, until the West Northants pays over the first half of your precept, you will have nothing at all. And you may recall when we met officers and the councillor from Weymouth Town Council, set up in similar circumstances to yourself eighteen months ago, they agreed to have for each of four years a sum of two hundred and fifty thousand pounds to build up a contingency. So for ourselves, we're suggesting that the contingency should be again, one hundred thousand pounds, but dealt with over five years at a figure of two hundred thousand pounds, which would roughly equate to fifty percent of your potential gross budget, taking into account all income and expenditure that we've been talking about. The other point of note here is that the base of the town council tax, the number of, and the equivalent properties within the area of the town council, is thirty six thousand four hundred and one. And perhaps I'll stop there on the principle of contingency, in case any members have any questions.
Jamie, councillor Lane.
Yeah, just a very quick question. Have we allocated enough money for training? Because I, I see you've got the sixteen thousand for staffing costs, which includes training, and there's some other on the end of the mail, because the mayor goes for training, which is a day's train to learn how to lead up. But also, this is a brand new council. We can have new staff and position who are running things slightly differently. We can have perhaps new councillors, certainly councillors not sat on the town council before. And I think if we're not, we need, we're going to need training, because we could be set in a borough council mindset, thinking we can do things the borough council way. And we've got to sort of retrain ourselves. Now, I'm sure we can marry it with other councils around the town. I know we've offered trained at the councils in Guildhall in the past, sometimes it's been taken, sometimes it hasn't. But I think we need to make sure that we have got the training there or the budget for training, because I think we're going to need some personally.
I think that's included, isn't it, Richard?
It, it is so, and we, it is in our work programme, councillor, to produce a training package to you, or I should say perhaps more correctly, an induction package after the election for, for the council. And we have already been talking to Dumbarton University about having some bespoke training, the biggest and I'm sure you'll agree, the best town council should have the best advice, so that we will indeed be looking at the meeting in March at a training programme, an induction programme for the new council. And you've already agreed in the contract with your new town clerk that you will provide ongoing professional development training throughout, and you have a commitment to supporting her through attendance at training course. And you have a commitment to supporting her through attendance at training courses. Yes, it is provided.
Thank you. Um, Council Hallam, you have a question?
I have kind of three comments and I'll group them as I can, if that's okay. There was some mood music at last night's meeting from a member or two regarding reducing the mayoral budget, as it were, on a whole. I just wanted to give the line from the kind of the Conservative group really is that we wouldn't support him reducing that. I understand that it's in at the level that it's in at the moment, and we think that's absolutely right that it stays at the same level. I think one of the principles behind founding this council was in retaining the mayoralty. So I think we need to retain that at the same cost as we have done in the past and not try to. To beg, steal and borrow and slim it down in any way or cut budgets or. Again, as Council Lane said earlier, start looking at the carve or the number plate. We just need to accept that we've retained it and that's the cost of retaining it is what it is at the moment. So I think that's a big, that's kind of like the positive, that's the kind of yes that I think you get from us. I think that's at the right level. I think the, in terms of other positives, I think the council community fund and the community grants fund. I think the levels might be debatable depending on what you have in and out, but to have those lines in, I think is really important. And there could be some debate maybe around. And this is just what people have said to me rather than my thoughts, because I think the level's kind of about right, but potentially even. Setting that at two thousand a person at the moment rather than three, which is what the, which would be a continuation of where the Borough Council's at at the moment. Although it was obviously three thousand for a long time. In terms of my concerns, I still have concerns that we're putting in quite a bit of fat and until we kind of. Decide what we're going to do, we'll decide, as Richard says, really, how much, how much fat we need to put into reserves. So if we don't do things like the Guildhall and the risk of losing that income, well, actually, we probably don't need to bank as much in reserves. And again, I'm also a bit concerned around the two hundred K for new services. Should we not just be picking the new services that we want to the value of two hundred thousand rather than putting them on top? And all of these concerns about what I'd call is sort of extra fat, I know this is a sensible accounting thing to do. But I'm thinking of it from the point of view of residents and I think the figure is two pounds seventy five for every hundred thousand that you put in. It doesn't take long with hundred thousands to get up to quite a significant number onto the precept of, you know, of double figures, you know, ten pounds plus. Onto the precept. So my concerns, if you like, are on the amount of additional fat in there. Based on the fact that frequently, obviously, we haven't got the exact numbers to make an exact decision on exactly how much we put in. And therefore exactly how much fat we need in there. And therefore, if we put less in, we would need less fat and we'd be able to save on the precept. So there are my concerns. So some good and some concerns as well, but certainly please take it from us. There was vehement disagreement from people I've spoken to today on reducing the mayoral budget. Make it a bit thinner, you know, making some savings. This is the big thing that we've achieved. It's our big achievement, big tick in the box. We need to be proud of our mayoralty and spend on it accordingly.
Thank you for that. Did you want to comment on that, Richard? Because I have got Council Marriott as well.
No, I think that helpful comment, I have nothing to say.
Right, Les, Council Marriott.
Yeah, thanks. One personal thanks to Mark for that, at least, he's sort of made the stool out there. One thing I'd like to add to what Mark's saying, because the comments are made about the council allowance on this and a thousand pounds now. I'd just like to make a comment on that because at the moment councillors are running the show here and also the Borough Council, as well as the County Council, receive an allowance. There's substantially more allowance than the one thousand pounds that's been proposed here. But on top of what the councillors get, they also get enhancements to the allowances. Other councillors in particular, imagine the county councillors same, can claim childcare if they need it. They can also claim travel expenses if they need it. And there are a number of embellishments, particularly when now that we've actually got IT, we also got IT support. So there's quite a few things there that Borough Councils on top of their allowance, which is far more than the one thousand pounds they get. And obviously, these are the issues, the ones that I've added on, the add-ons, are something that parish councillors and town councillors don't get. So my view on the one thousand is it should be there for councillors to support them. Not in the same way as the Borough Council, County Councillors get, but I imagine on the unitary, if we've got dual councillors. I imagine that, you know, if the feeling is they shouldn't be there, then they should be claiming it. They obviously get the support from the other council. So just to say, I think it should remain, particularly as it's been mentioned about training for new councillors, just town councillors. And I don't think we should be putting them off if I've got to fund the own resources, as I say, like travel and like childcare and things like that. So that's one thing I'd like to add to this, to make sure we've got that on board. The other thing I'd like to ask, and I'm pleased Marion's on, I wonder if she can answer this. Mark's mentioned the council community fund, it's got, should it be three thousand or two thousand? My understanding at the moment is, you have to explain to me where the money comes from at present, it comes from the new homes bonus, I understood through the Borough. That may have changed, I'm not quite sure what budget line that comes from now, as the Borough councillors get. And what's going to happen to that and the new homes bonus? I did read it in the local government newsletter that came yesterday to me, it's still there for this year. Considering future years on the new homes bonus, or will that be just scuffled up by the unitary councillors? That's one area. The other area, not a little bit more information on as well, is plant to hanging baskets. When I spoke to Mark and that sixty six thousand, Mark spoke to me a week or so ago. It wasn't anywhere near that figure that we thought that Borough Council enhanced the service that we get from I D Verdi or that side. So that's a little bit more detail, you know, I think it needs to be in there, but is that the correct figure? So that's the sort of detail that I need to understand a little bit more about. And understand from Richard's point of view that this is more of a broad brush, so we can set a precept. But it's, a lot of it's in the detail. I think none of us want to actually increase the burden on the local taxpayer. And I just wondered if sometime this evening, somebody can give us an idea roughly, and I don't know what the West Northants are proposing. And how much this is going to add to people's pockets. In certain instances, it may add none, our precept. Because Northants might be coming off better on council tax in the coming years compared with South Northants and Downtree, we might be equalising more down. So just one or two points there, just wondering if you can clear them up, really.
And Richard, do you want to go through the four areas of cost and?
On the budget, Chair.
Yes, and answer some of these queries as we go through.
I think that might be helpful, yes. If I just look at, if we perhaps turn to the back page of the report, Chair. And I'll run through and hopefully answer the, or attempt to answer the questions that have been posed as we go through. And so the Borough Council last night agreed a base budget. Its officers have looked into the potential costs and that is recommended to you. So on the back page, the first column is the Borough Council's recommendation for you as the base budget. And then I've included a recommended revised budget, bearing in mind the matters you've been discussing about services. But some of the things I would like to point out. To start with, on staffing costs, that includes the staff mentioned in the report, the town clerk and the three support staff and training, et cetera. And that we've talked about. The second item, which wasn't in the Borough Council budget, but I've suggested you would want to consider. Is an additional sum of sixty thousand pounds as the proportion, the start of a first year engagement. Of a community engagement officer or some such title. Bearing in mind the potential community development services you are discussing with the Borough Council, with the West Northants. And that there's a potential, I think, that that would be a first priority, additional officer. Together with any other officers you may wish to engage. And I would think the council would want to probably play its full part in engaging apprentices. And I was suggesting that this would be the time to start putting in, included in that sixty thousand would be the engagement with two administrative. You could offer in your first year and that would obviously start in September. And tell me to stop if you wish, Chair, as we go through. The next, the running costs. It was down by the Borough Council for forty thousand, but we are working, as the committee know, towards looking in detail at. IT, ICT and telephones and all the other services we're likely to have. And payroll systems, financial support, sorry, accountancy support, I can say, for the council. And I think fifty thousand is a more realistic figure. In the light of the extra time we've had since the N Calc helped the Borough Council officers prepare the first figure. The member and mayoral costs include for the mayoral budget, as has been discussed, plus that potential for. An allowance for councillors. Just to clarify the point that Commissioner Marriott made is perfectly correct. The rule to relate, the law relating to town and parish councils is different than for principal councils like the Borough Council. You can only pay and provide support to councillors through a parish basic allowance. And that has to be the same figure for all councillors, except for the chair, who may get more. And you can only make that allowance on the recommend, after considering the recommendation of an independent parish remuneration. Panel that the principal council, in this case the Borough Council, has to convene. And the Borough has already agreed to convene a panel for you. As councillor Marriott says, it's not possible to pay any other expenses. Except for the cost of travel and subsistence outside of the area of the council. So if you've sent a delegate, let's say, to a conference in London, they will be entitled to their travel expenses. And that is the reason why we put twenty six thousand rather than twenty five in the budget. So that there is a contingency for other additional permitted expenses for councillors. But if you were to offer anything towards councillors, it has to be in the parish basic allowance, you can't pay anything else. The election costs is the standard figure, and I think we've talked enough about the Guildhall costs of a hundred and eighty. The other miscellaneous costs and contingency, there was thirty thousand, I've put it up to fifty thousand. This includes for legal fees. And we are about to engage professional legal advice to assist with the various, the lease and other matters. And potentially have surveying advice too. And whilst that wouldn't be so high, I think the original figure of thirty thousand is insufficient. I don't have full costs, but it could be significant and it would. I think fifty thousand is a more reasonable contingency figure. Big change then is that the Borough Council's recommendations to you did include for four hundred thousand pounds for future services to develop. And for, with anything left to transfer. I believe that it would be better for the council to clearly identify that, so you'll see I've split that. Into a first contribution to reserves, I've mentioned with two hundred thousand. And then the balance of that four hundred that the Borough Council suggested. And be clearly indicated for new service and service enhancements. In my report, as councillor Hallam mentioned, I have suggested that if you wish to increase that. Because the council is already drawing up a long list, commendable long list of community initiatives you would wish to consider. They would all have to be met from this figure, as would any actual costs relating to closed churchyards and allotments. And of course, as you know, how staff costs run, even if you decided to do something on, let's say, climate change or. Health and wellbeing or community safety, it all has to come from this sum. And members have been suggesting a number of things in meetings which would eat away with that very quickly. So Hallam asked, is this too much? I have to put to you that you may feel it isn't enough and to give real scope to the new council, you might want to consider more. And I do understand that there's a sensitivity to this issue, but that's why I gave you at least the figure. If you put for each hundred thousand extra, were you to increase that figure, it would add two pounds seventy five to the band D, as councillor Hallam correctly said. Then the community grants, I won't dwell further, that's as it says. The first figure is on the basis of three thousand per member and the fifty thousand is an assumption that you will eventually agree with the Borough Council. A distribution of those community grants, much larger figure than the Borough Council have been paying. You'll decide that it will be agreed, some of those minor sums would be transferred and become the responsibility. And council, and that's the contingency to meet that if you were so agreed. We then come to the actual services, Chair, and these are the ones you've already said you're willing to go forward in principle. And this just confirms those figures supplied by Borough officers. And I would look to Laurie and Marion to assist if there are direct questions. So allotments, that excludes staff costs, that's just the services currently provided, like water and rates, et cetera. To the allotments, the baseline for the markets having taken into account income and expenditure, that's the net figure. That is the cost, I understand, for hanging baskets, Marion may want to help us by explaining that further, but. Similarly, these are the actual figures for events and entertainments, festive lighting and Christmas. And the net figure for town centre management don't have a figure for closed churchyards. That, as you see, comes up to a total of one point seven seven five million pounds, which I have. Summarised at the bottom of page thirteen as a comparison. Now, I know that doesn't mean anything to the people who are paying it, but it is perhaps of interest to you to see how that compares with other parish councils. And you can see that this equates on the basis of thirty six thousand four hundred and one band D properties to. Forty eight pounds seventy eight for the area of the town council, which compares with. The average in England for all town and parishes of seventy five pounds, the average for Northamptonshire is seventy one. It's a very similar figure to that being recommended by the Borough for Farcotten Community Council. And slightly above the figure being recommended for Kingsborough Parish Council. But when we looked at the very larger town council, the largest twenty town councils, and of course, we are the largest town council there. Their average was a hundred and ten pounds. You asked me also to mention, Chair, about the different bandings. The band D is the full figure and then as you reduce, it drops by a ninth. So if you looked at band C, that is eight ninths of the band D figure. Band B is seven ninths and band A is six ninths. And it increases up to eighteen ninths or band H, but. A band A, which would be a typical, say, terrace house in the centre of Northampton, would equate. The forty eight pounds is actually for that sort of property, thirty two pounds fifty two or sixty two pounds a week. Again, I'll try and answer questions if they arise and I will hopefully colleagues from the Borough Council help me out a bit.
That may. Do we have any questions on or comments on the proposals for? The planting the markets, the events and entertainment? Is there anything on that list that you feel is absolutely essential? Anything on that list that you feel is something over and above we should be offering? Yes, Council, welcome. Actually, Council Marriott has his hand up first, excuse me.
Thank you, Chair. I probably jumped ahead, didn't I, asking my questions previously? The community fund that's on that list, extra list, at the moment, and my understanding, when it first kicked off in the Borough, we actually took it from the new homes bonus. Is that sort of, and I'm not quite sure, it's been added to this, and I know that councillor Hallam was keen to include it in this, whether it's three thousand or two thousand, it doesn't really matter. But what's happening to the new homes bonus, which is in for another year, as I understand it? So that's the band, is that the unitary just going to take that themselves? And are we actually looking at to try to retrieve some of that or are the unitary councillors going to take that? Which will mean unitary councillors in Northampton will probably be using it as well in the same areas as the town councillors are. So that's one area, need some clarity on that. The other one was to do with the hanging baskets, the sixty six thousand five hundred. When I spoke to councillor Hallam, well, he spoke to me about it. He indicated a couple of weeks ago, there's a portfolio, where he thought it's around about twenty five thousand that was enhancements. This looks if it's sixty six and a half, is that just within the town council boundaries? This is the other thing with these things, we're looking at just the town council boundary areas now, not the Borough wide areas. Is that being pared down to the town council budgets or is that the Borough, the old Borough wide one? I think that was another question, but I can't remember what it was. I think I mentioned about. I think I mentioned about bits and pieces, but I think that's it for now, Chair. You know, so that's a couple of questions. Anyway, a couple of cases I need.
Right. Could I just ask Marion about the councillor community fund? This does come within your directive and I was just wondering if you had any indication as to what was going to happen as in the unitary for the unitary councillors? Because obviously they will, they will be also in, you know, areas of the town council.
Thank you, Chair. In terms of what the unitary plans are, I don't know at this stage, other than the current grants that we pay out, they are funded through the general revenue budget. So they have been accounted for in the unitary in the same amount that we paid out this year from revenue budget. And as far as I'm aware, councillor Marriott, that that funding doesn't come from the new homes bonus and for the actual community funding grants. I think that's in addition to.
And what about something like CFAP as small, small grants? Will they exist in the unitary? Because obviously, again, that is community funding that will come back into the town through the unitary councils.
So currently, the budget for the unitary includes that funding, you know, exactly as it was in the budget this year, has been included in the budget for the unitary next year.
And do the other districts and boroughs at the moment have a similar system as we do?
I'd probably need to refer to Vicky Rockwell because I don't really know in great detail whether they do or not in the others. I know in one of the others, they do rely on new homes bonus, which is probably where councillor Marriott had that information from. And but I don't know exactly what their existing arrangements are at the moment, I'm afraid. I'd need to find out.
Because that might, that might be quite an indicator as to how we approach the councillor community funding.
Yeah. Chair, I did have my hand up.
Yes, I was just, yes, I was just coming to councillor.
Before, I was going to ask.
Well, hold on, councillor Markham.
Yes, just a minute, councillor Markham.
Hanging baskets, I asked a question about that. Have you forgotten about that one?
Yes. Hanging baskets. Anybody got any thoughts on hanging baskets?
Would be helpful, Chair, if I answer that.
Please do.
I believe that the budget that's been listed there is what we spent on hanging baskets within the current financial year. But it doesn't include the enhancements because there was a budget cut made within this financial year. So that is the actual cost. So if, say, the unitary was still, so that budget sits within the unitary. So if the unitary still delivered Bloom, that money could then be used to enhance the service back to higher than actually what it would have been when we did have the enhancement before the budget cut was proposed. Does that explain?
Just a little, but councillor Hallam seemed to imply a part of the Audi Verde contract, you know, it's part of their contractor supply. And what the Borough Council was to enhance that in certain ways. He thought it's twenty five thousand. And that's what I was asking about. Is that sixty five, sixty six thousand? Is that what it means enhancing what's already as part of the contract to Audi Verde? If it's to enhance it, okay, but is that just town council wide or is that complete borough wide? As in the areas that are now being covered by parishes?
That, that figure is the borough wide cost that it costs this year.
Okay, so yeah.
It's not the town council. Thank you. I mean, I think a lot of these figures we have to appreciate cannot be pulled apart at this stage. But these are Borough Council costs, which will obviously be higher than a town council cost. So councillor Markham and then councillor Russell, if you have a question.
Well, first of all, looking at the revised figures, I'm doubtful about the, the putting three thousand pounds into community funding for the town councillors, especially if we don't know whether that's still going to be in the budget for unitary councils. Yeah, if, if, because it's very useful and it's been very well spent this year, especially with Covid and so on. And but, you know, this is already being done and it's already in somebody else's budget, as is large part of the other community grants. And the hanging baskets are already, for instance, in somebody else's budget and we believe in the but so many of the things here are what I was talking about when I said we want to know. Well, if we're going to take those things on, then I actually believe that they, we should be trying to obtain the funding, which people have already paid into a council for, to, 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 if they want to transfer it over here, there should be parts of that funding coming as well. We should, we're, we're jumping in and saying, we're going to do this, we'll do that, we'll, we'll do the other, all very valuable services. But, you know, nobody voted for us to decide on that. We haven't had a next. And, you know, but then I've got the other difficulty, we've got to set a contingency budget. And I think, you know, I wouldn't like to say, I'd rather be, have a large sum in there for contingencies than saying we are definitely going to do this, do that, do the other. Because our queries, our queries about that, are we right in giving each of those twenty five town councillors three thousand pounds to doll out into, into their areas? You know, it could be port barrel type politics, if you like. They've got three, oh, we've got three thousand pounds to spend, I'll give it to you there. Especially if somebody else is doing the same, exactly the same thing. Yeah. So I'd rather see a larger contingency and let's negotiate specifics with the other councils. The total amount, fifty pound is not a, round about fifty pound is not my main concern because lots of people wouldn't be paying as much as that. But we've got to remember nearly everything on this list has been done by somebody else in the past. And so all you're doing is giving the people what they had before and charging them for it.
Right. I take your point on the community fund. I think councillor Hallam suggested two thousand, bearing in mind that will be, there will be other, other councillors, you know, unitary councillors with community fund as well. The, you know, that might be something that we could be looking at. And councillor Russell, you had a question.
Yes, thank you. I think it would be quite an important and opportune time, not at this meeting, but certainly at one that's coming quite quickly, to decide what it is we want as priorities as councillors to show what our new town council is capable of and possibly get a costing of how much that will cost as well. Because I'm sure the public love the, the hanging baskets and want us to continue to maintain the town centre to a very high standard. And I'm sure there must be other, I don't want to use the word quick or small fixes, but I'm sure there must be other ways that we can show our community and our residents and the town generally that we're here to do a good job and we're here to stay and improve things.
I absolutely agree with that. And we mustn't leave out the areas outside the town centre. I mean, the town council, you know, will cover Talavira, it'll cover Rectory Farm, it'll cover, you know, Castle and so along. There's a huge area for the town council to cover. And it's not just the town centre where we're used to having all these services and enhancements concentrated on. So, you know, every part of the town council must benefit, must see a difference. And, you know, I absolutely agree, we have to have, we have to show that we're going to do, make a difference, absolutely make a difference. So I think that is an important thing to look at when you're thinking about some of these services. Some, you know, are obviously there for the whole town. Events and entertainments, festive lighting, they would be there for the whole town, something like the fireworks. It is there for the whole of the town council. And, you know, many of the events could spread from the town centre out into, you know, into Abington, onto the racecourse. It's not necessarily town centre based when we're looking at these events. So you're looking at things slightly differently, doing things in a different way. Richard, Marion, do, oh, councillor. Stephen.
You need to unmute, councillor.
Yes.
Councillor Hibbert, you need to unmute.
We still can't hear you.
Me trying to unmute and there I am trying to unmute. I just, I'm glad Brian said what he did because this is the thing that confronts me. In the Northampton Borough Council recommended baseline, because these items that you're discussing aren't in there, in my view, it kind of automatically assumes that they're already going to be picked up by the unitary. And you've already spoke about what the elected council are likely to enter into in discussions once they're in place. And these are the kind of things that are talking about taking them over, that they're likely to take forward through the year. So perhaps they don't have to be included in, in the, the budget you set for them. Because I'm very concerned, you've, you've all spoken. I'm very concerned about this idea that an unelected shadow councillor should kind of predetermine what an elected council might want to do. And you, Chair, when you introduced this, you talked about providing sufficient funds for the elected council to go forward. I see that just as working their way through the year and, and, and giving them this opportunity to discuss these various matters that are, that are in this proposed budget and take them forward from there. I'm not entirely sure that you need to look much, I mean, there are issues arising. For example, nobody's talked about events and entertainment, whether there are particular plans that need to be funded in advance. But so it may be that the, the baseline budget does have to be increased slightly. But I think we should essentially be leaving it to the elected council to make these kind of decisions.
I think the problem is there, Stephen, that unless we decide on a budget for the new council to work with, the precept has to be set at the end of January. There will be no money to do anything else until the next precept is set the following year. So we're, in a sense.
Well, there will be, there will be two hundred thousand, there will be two hundred thousand.
If we look at what there is there, the two hundred thousand probably won't go very far with, with the ambitions that a new council might have. And there's no main, there's no means of them raising any further funds. And I think one of the things that, you know, came out in the consultation very strongly was that people wanted to see a difference. They want to see the difference a town council would make. They wanted better services and they wanted, you know, they were happy to pay for something as long as it was done better. And there was more to see, more for their money.
Can I just come back on, on that? Yeah. First of all, consultation for the town council, there were very few people interested in it at all. You and I think the town hall is very important and I'm sure people, and the merrility is important. And indeed it is, lots of people weren't that concerned at all about. And what I'm maybe suggesting is not, is not so much that we don't actually make this budget of one, one point seven seven five or somewhere between the Borough Council budget and that figure. I'm not against that at all because the, the new council has to have some leeway and, and will come up with some project. What I'm concerned about is by identifying all these items. We spoke on the last item, there, we are going to negotiate with the new unitary what things we might take on and we would seek funding if we're going to do those things. Now we're simply saying here, oh, we're putting money in the budget already for that specific line and not set in stone, but we're mentioning in here that we're setting aside money for Northampton in Bloom spreads out, especially in West Brom, we have lots of things and, and hanging things. I'm only favour Northampton in Bloom, but that has been funded in the past by somebody. I'm against really identifying such things in this budget. I'm quite happy we set a contingency budget somewhere between these two or even at the top end. But I'm just concerned of saying we're putting money there and it will be used for the Christmas lights, it will be used for this, that or the other, when we hoping we're going to get other funding for those things. So if you, sorry.
Yeah, Richard, would you like to come in there? Because I can see you wanting to speak on this.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I did mention at the beginning that the second recommendation was that as a matter of priority, the new town clerk undertakes a detailed review of all these services we've been talking about for you to consider modification or enhancements, treating them just as that contingency figure and not a commitment, for example, to spend a hundred and four thousand pounds on events, that they are contingencies and you're instructing the town clerk to come back to you with a full list of what you wish to do or the new council wishes to do during its first year. I just wanted to make that point perfectly clear. A normal practice for councils in some cases is to use the mechanism of starring an item and saying that this item won't be expended without a further report to the council. So you could, if you wished, for some of these services, whichever you feel appropriate, say you will star that and make it, which is really councillor Hibbert's point of making it, I know he was questioning the overall contingency, but it actually increases the overall contingency and takes out the specific nature. And you just put stars against some of those latter items and say that further reports required before you authorised expenditure of anything on those.
Right, thank you. Les, councillor Marriott.
Yeah, well, thanks, Richard. I was, I didn't catch it coming before you came, so. I beg your pardon. I'm pleased you clarified that really because what concerns me is when, when we get this, and it was, somebody said it last night and people picked up today saying we're not elected to do this. Well, you're right. But then again, it's a Conservative government that's told us we've got to do it. That's one thing. And when they're saying, oh, we should leave it to elected members, well, for the last two years, it's a bit rich, isn't it? That for the last two years, we've got a Borough Council and a county council that's not elected. I tell you, some of the budgets I've been dealing with and agreeing to are now considerably more than this. So I think it's a little bit rich then saying we should leave it to elected members after the election because that should have happened in the last two years and it hasn't. We've also got the Western France, oh blimey, now setting a budget and they're not elected. So I think that's a bit of a spurious argument saying, let's leave it, let's kick it into the long grass. At the end of the day, we should be making sure we set something up now. As much as I don't, I appreciate the fact that we're actually burdening members of the town who go through a really hard time because of the pandemic and furlough, I realise that. But then again, we are setting the town council up and don't let's set it up to fail, for goodness sake. You know, let's make sure we have got budgets there, whether you can call them contingency or whatever. But these figures obviously came about because that's where not just the working parts, but officers felt that these things are the need. And my belief is some of these issues, you're probably right, you know, the Borough Council did pay for some of these services. I can tell you now, the budget that these non-elected unitary people are putting in and making sure they cut these out for the town. And what they're saying particularly when it comes to the things like the hanging basket planters, well, we don't do it in Tosa, we don't do it in Downton, so let's slice out the budget. And a number of these issues are very similar. So I think the reason why they're here is to make sure we've got a safeguard that those things can continue if necessary because they are being chopped by this Western France people. So let's not play about too much, let's not try to kick things into the long grass. Let's make sure we make that decision to move it forward. It may not be in the right places, these figures, but these are the sort of figures I think we've got to deal with for the first year. And we may not be elected after the election, but at least it gives the new councillors something to take things forward and make sure it's a success.
Thank you. And just to add to that, and I have to say that I do agree that we don't want to set this up to fail. If we don't produce a precept or suggest a precept and a budget, that is going to If we don't produce a precept or suggest a precept and a budget that is going to offer opportunities, next year they'll have to make an increase that will be even less acceptable to people, you know, a year on. We can't, we can't make large increases. Perhaps, you know, budgets are going to be cut, the, the precept's going to be cut. And to, to have a very large increase in year two is not a good ploy. If there's money over, then you can put that into the contingency, you can put it into reserves. But you can't ask the residents in year two to increase their budget by, you know, 10%, by 20%. So, you know, the, it's, it's better to do it, you know, but do a generous or realistic budget now and allow the new council to, to fulfil some of the ambitions and the vision that, you know, as new councillors, we would all want to see happen.
Chair, Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against, certainly not against setting a budget because we've got to set a budget. I'm not against setting a realistic budget. And I totally accept what councillor Marion said, some of these things are going to come to us or just not going to be picked up by. I, even, even the total budget suggested here at the precept set here, I am, is probably realistic because we all know that in, it's going to be, we don't want to say to set it at less and then have to double next year and double the year after. So, so I'm not against that. I, I, maybe nitpicking, I am just against saying there, we're going to do the hanging baskets at, at this stage, we're going to do that. If, if there's some way and you, if that's put down as, as a possible wishlist, because I think Northampton in Bloom, for instance, has been a bonus for the town. I think some of the, some of the community grants are very important. I would hope that the new West North Hans Unitary Authority is going to continue to fund those things because it should be doing. And, and then the new town council can do the extras on top of that. And, and it, it's just, say, the, I, I realise we've got to set a realistic budget and we've got to give some money for the town council to actually spend on making improvements. But it's just the way it's freight, it's set out here, maybe. Yeah, that's, that's my main point for taking up things that are already happening. These things, you know, we have Northampton in Bloom for years and it should continue and I hope somebody else pays for it.
The thing is, a lot of, Toaster doesn't have Northampton, doesn't have Bloom, none of the other towns, you know, they, they paid, the town councils, parish councils pay for Bloom themselves. Unitary isn't going to pay for that, you know, they won't do it. And, you know, similarly, they're not going to provide town councillors with a community fund. If you want as a town councillor to have some money to spend in your ward for events, for supporting groups in your ward, you personally that are involved with or that you start up or that you have a particular interest in, or your residents have come to you and asked for some help, if you don't have any of that fund, you know, what do you do? You can't rely on your unitary councillors to agree that that's the project that they want to support. You know, we have to, we are here for our residents, we are closest to our residents. We know the people in our wards and that's, you know, we should, we should be here for our communities in a way that perhaps the unitary councillors will, will not have that opportunity. I mean, they are dealing with statutory services. None of the services that we are going to be delivering in the town council are statutory. They are, you know, at our discretion. They are the things that we want to do for the communities and the residents. So if we don't have that ability, I think we're failing, you know, right, well, we just don't have that, that breadth of opportunity to, to, to respond to our residents. Yes, councillor Russell.
Yes, thank you. Unless there's anything, I mean, we're, we're talking about things that may or may not be happening. So I'd like to, to ask for this meeting to, to come to an end. I don't think we've got anything else to discuss, have we?
Can, is there anybody else who'd like to contribute before we, before we actually come to some sort of decision? Councillor Lane, very quiet. Nothing, no.
No, I'm happy. I'm just pleased, Jane, that you mentioned that the, the boards of the town council go out as far as Brumford and Lumber Tubs, Kings Park Terrace, places that haven't seen flowers for years, though we really like some down there. Thank you.
And we do have a much wider reach in the town council than, you know, traditionally the town centre. So I think there will be places where we would want to enhance, you know, if, if, if we're going to put flowers out, you know, Kings Park Terrace, out in Lumber Tubs, out in, you know, Eastfield. I think we want to think about the whole area and it is going to require extra funding to do that.
Chair, could, obviously Catherine's sort of moving that we sort of come to a conclusion. And could I suggest that we take on board what Richard said and put stars against some of these items that, that people are uncomfortable with putting in there. So we actually, so people do realise in future, that won't go ahead unless there is approval of the elected, I imagine it would be the elected councillors after the first of, well, it, it being made though, wouldn't it? You know, so I think that's, that's a good idea. It does show that we've been thoughtful about this. I, I think we do need at some stage to make sure we do know exactly what West North Hans have cut out. I understand that clearly indicated the Bloom is gone and the other, other items, I should imagine the lighting and stuff like that is out of the budget. I think we all need some clarity on that. And if, and if there is some money there to be taken back, great. Then we can use that money for, for the purposes in the contingency, you know.
Right.
Yeah, could I suggest if you wish to do that, it may be because they're the largest items that you put stars against events and entertainments and the festive lighting and Christmas. That gives you still a chance to consider the principal items in detail. And with regard to Bloom, I, I presume that you would want to have, or the hanging baskets, not to touch that at the moment because you want to give Marion the flexibility or whoever is, when she's appointed, flexibility to place orders pretty quickly. We're going to have summer plants. I don't suppose that's something that could be left too much. But if you wanted to put stars, I would suggest perhaps those two items gives £100,000, £250,000, a quarter of a million pounds for you to earmark or to, to say you wish to have full, further reports before you consider any commitment to spend that level of money.
I, I've got no difficulty with that, Chair.
That seems to be a compromise, doesn't it?
If, if you're progressing towards someone moving the recommendations, Chair, could I mention particularly councillor Lane, and I apologise, you didn't let see this. I also added a little small extra on to these recommendations for the budget, Chair, that I may be permitted to read to you. In the written report, we haven't discussed it much now, but in the written report, I had mentioned the need to recruit three support officers and the full detail of the salary costs, pensions and non-costs and I, are all included in the report. But I ask you to consider passing the, adding this to your recommendations, that subject to the inclusion of appropriate provision in the finally adopted budget, town clerk be authorised to recruit and appoint the following support staff to start their duties on 1st of April 2021. That's a full-time admin officer, a part-time admin assistant and a part-time finance officer. Otherwise you will have a town clerk on their own, having to deal with these things on day one.
And that, that is in the base budget that has been.
It is indeed.
Yes, yes. So can we ask on that?
Can I ask on that, Chair? I think it's sensible, but you mentioned as well about when the actual money flows through, Richard, from the unitary to us. So what, we will get to pay wages and overheads on that at that stage.
Well, we have to agree on your next meeting, arrangements for payroll. And clearly that is going to be a major consideration for your first to make sure you have cash flow to cover it.
Okay, smashing. Thank you. I'm glad I asked.
Yes, thank you. Can we agree those staff appointments? Go ahead. Thank you. Arthur, are you still with us? Councillor McCutcheon.
I'll just.
Councillor McCutcheon is trying to speak but is muted at the moment. I don't know, Maisie.
There we are. Yes, I'm still here, Chair.
Is, is there anything that you'd like to add at this point?
No, I've, I've been very happy following all of this discussion. And yes, it's, it seems to me to be sensible to star those two items that Richard mentioned.
Okay. What difference does that make to our recommendation, Richard?
Well, it, it adds a forth that those items that are starred, no, no funds are expended without further approval by the council.
Right. So what do we have to do now? We have agreed on the staffing.
Well, you have, you have a recommendation now to approve the graph budget in the sum of £1,700,000 and the rest figure, sorry, I'll turn my page over. Yes, 1,775, as set out in the appendix to the report and to agree a precept on that sum. This is a recommendation to the full council on the 27th. And as a matter of priority, the town clerk, the new town clerk, undertakes detailed reviews of all services that are transferred to enable you to consider any possible modifications or enhancements to those services. And thirdly, the point you've just agreed on the salary, the, the additional three members of staff recruiting them. And fourthly, that those items that have been starred in the budget be subject to further reports before any.
Right, thank you. And just for clarity, that brings the, the precept out at £48.78, which is £4 a month for band D, band A is £32.52 a year with a payment of £2.71 per month. Just to make sure that everyone's clear on that. Right, can we have an agreement on that proposal, please? Right. I can't see any hands, Arthur. Are you happy with that? Arthur, councillor McCutcheon.
We got me.
Yes, yes. Is it?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
All right, thank you. And councillor Hibbert?
Well, councillor Hibbert, currently Chair is observing. I know he's likely to be.
Oh, yes, I beg your pardon.
He doesn't have a vote at the moment. He will, of course, have a vote like all councillors.
Of course, thank you very much. And, yes, councillor Lane.
Councillor Markham.
Yes, councillor Lane is here and councillor Markham. Right, thank you very much.
That's all members of the committee in favour.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Let's say, councillor Hallam's joined, but I, I just wondered if Richard could actually explain so for Mike's benefit then, what the, what the stars mean, because obviously we discussed that when he wasn't here, the fact that we're starring items.
Sorry, yes, you have agreed that the two largest items at the bottom of the budget, sorry. I can't remember the page. The, the sum of £104,000, events and entertainments and festive lighting and Christmas are subject, no expenditure will be undertaken without a further report to the council.
Okay, I did, I did gather that, the, the gist of most of that, I just didn't know what items it was relating to. But thanks, because I, apologies on, on that.
Yeah, it was the, the two largest items, councillor.
Thank you. Well, thanks very much for that. We're still, I think, we'd very much appreciate some further figures, especially on the Guildhall income and perhaps some clarification around where somebody's budgets sit and if they're going to continue, whether they're with North Hans, West North Hans or whether they will be, some things that West North Hans will drop as they're not provided for the other towns or parishes. So is that, is, is everybody happy with that, Richard?
Yes, I'm quite clear. Thank you very much, Chair.
Quite clear on that, thank you. Anything else anybody would like to add before we close?
Well, today you've just got the final item on, just to note, the future meetings.
Yes, I beg your pardon.
And just while, whilst I was speaking, I've just listed for your information that the matters I'm intending to include in the report for your meeting in February. And then in February, I'll tell you the things I think we'll be, need to consider in March. I've indicated some of them already. You'll have a detailed work programme to get through, but you're doing quite well. You're on target to do everything.
Thank you. Yes, Thursday, the 18th of February, we're going to be looking at the office, you know, the office management really, payroll, IT, professional sports and so on. And then full council on 1st of March, executive committee 15th of March and executive committee on the 12th of April.
So one of the councillors asked me, Chair, about the meeting on the 12th of April. And of course you'll be in the middle of Pirda then for the elections. So there, there's no issue. I'm satisfied. And it's good to have the monitoring officer here to advise us. But provided we do not deal with any politically sensitive issues or new policy matters, and you won't be asked, these will be finalising any administrative matters relating to the creation of the council. Perfectly lawful, you can continue to meet during the Pirda period as long as we are aware of the sensitivity of not being engaged in matters that may, may be very difficult to the election.
Right, thank you. And full council is on Wednesday, the 27th, when the agreement will have to be passed by the full council for the precept to be set.
And Chair, could I just point out that it's in accordance with the agreement at the last meeting, that is at 6pm. We initially had a meeting at 6.30. All your meetings are currently at 6pm until the AGM.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Lesley and Richard. Marion, thank you very much for joining us. And I think it's general knowledge now that you, you know, that you've been appointed as the town clerk. And congratulations. We're delighted that you have accepted the appointment and we very much look forward to working with you. I think you'll be a tremendous asset and help as we move forward through this process. So thank you very much for coming along tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you, everybody, Rufia, Mike and Maisie. I think that's the rest, the rest are, Lesley, all executive members, the rest. So thank you very much indeed for attending and for your.